Thank you. I told him that I did that for work. Did you try to volunteer today? Peter, did you go to volunteer today? First year. Red carpet.
How are you doing?
John Lian.
John Lian. He's our prospect.
It hasn't been too long. I just wanted to say hi.
Okay, everybody. It is six o'clock. I'd like to call the order. The regular meeting of Woodstock Landing Board for August 21st, 2025. We have a forum. Are there any updates to the agenda? Yep, finish August 7th if everybody's associated with that.
Two seconds.
Favor. Okay. And we're still keeping the public hearing open for 11:05 group 28. If you could propose gas station, does anybody here for that? The public hearing is still open. If not, it will remain open. We'll wait for some more information. Okay, so tonight we have a public hearing. The first one is the state of St. Louis Equity Trust. Special use permit number 25-0702. This is a public hearing for special use permit application. For timber harvest in the R5 zoning has been located at 626 Wittenberg Road and Johnette Lane in Mount River. This is the logger.
Forester.
Representing the case.
Yep.
So it says a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public for this to do the case?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm sorry. Can I make a motion to open the public hearing? Favor.
Hi.
Okay, now is there anybody here for this case?
Yep.
Could you please state your name to?
Can you actually come up and kind of stand by me? Because the microphone's right here, so then the video, they can hopefully hear you. So one at a time. First, I, you guys have a letter underneath your stuff. They probably didn't get yet from Jim Moran. I spoke to him. He knows about the performance bond and just want to remind him of the private road. Okay, I saw three hands, so we'll start over here. Number one, if you just want to come up and tell me your name. Matt, the microphone break. All right, what's your name? Kristi K R I S T I. Poling P O L I N G. If they still admit, let's move on. All right, please speak. Oh, I was, I'm here because I'm interested because we have property that's adjacent. As a way to learn more about what's being proposed. Wonderful. So this is, this is the forester who kind of candles everything. It's Chris Perkins. This is one of the contributors.
Whereabouts is the property?
Right to 18. Sorry, my store on Weber.
Okay, so the majority, I mean, I don't know if you've looked at any of the maps, but.
She has.
Yeah, so. You know, the harvesting is having, happening quite a ways from pretty much any of the houses. So visually, I don't know if you'll actually even notice it. Sure, you're going to hear some noise, but you know, when the permit is issued, it would be, we would work in a lot of days and times of the town permits, so.
Um, just kind of like from a density standpoint, like how much, how much is I can impact the density of certain factors?
When you're looking up at the hill, you probably won't notice a lot. It's roughly probably 20% somewhere around there that's being removed, so, yes.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, who are you are? Susan Liffery. L I F R I D R I. Heidi Lowery, L W R I. 622 Wittenberg Road. I'm the closest to you. Are you going to be logging your, our property line almost touches, not the harvest line. I've looked at the maps, but the property line that we're harvesting off of. And of course, your concerns about noise, but also the density. Are you going to be above? There's an existing logging trail up there already.
Yep.
That would, you know, hike up there and snowshoe up there and such, so. And that comes out on Johnette, is that where they're proposing?
We'll use that as part of it. That road goes down towards where that cabin is. We're going to probably branch off of that and head north. So the landing area is going to be further up Johnette Lane.
Okay.
Uh, but we will use some of that, so.
Right, but that, I mean, that's pretty close to our house. Like, not just our property, but our house, because we're right against the woods right there.
Yeah, I mean, when we marked, I mean, are you, this house right here at the bottom of the hill?
Yep.
Okay, so you have a topographical buffer. There's a steep slope that comes down. So we didn't mark anything on that slope, so we're at the top of that slope.
So that's where basically the old timber line, not timber line, but the travel is up north.
So that's where we're at. We didn't come down that slope towards your house.
All right.
Simply because.
Well, draw up the terrain.
Right, there's no access to that.
Yes, all right, and you're not planning on, because I sourced something. 326 Wittenberg Road on the permit of the.
Well, 626 is technically the address.
Yeah, oh, the address of that property, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, but you're not planning on using access out of choice. Thank you. Number three. Hi.
Simeon, spelled S I M E O N. Last name Bay, B A Y L E S. I just wanted to hear your, I'm 623 Wittenberg, right across the street, so looking at where the Y.
Oh, yeah.
Questions?
You answered the, you know, 20%, you probably won't tell.
Yeah, I mean visually from you being across the street, you won't be able to tell. I mean, it's, there's going to be a fair amount of timber, but it's nowhere by any means clear cut or anything like that, so.
Where's the access point to get the timber out of?
It's up to Johnette, so it won't be coming out to Wittenberg. With the fields at the bottom of Wittenberg wet, so we don't want to use that. Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Were members of any questions regarding this case? We went over the four of them like this.
Would you want me to address the letter from?
Ken.
Angela Warner. Okay, so, you know, I read their letter and I understand the concern. I liked their designation of loggers as pirates, but it's, it is what it is. So the $3,500 performance bond, from what I remember, has nothing to do with the road. That's basically performance in the woods. Make sure best management practices are done, make sure the cleanup is done properly. So, you know, in terms of the private road, my plan was is to post with the town the logger's liability policy. So if any of the people have an issue, we can sort it out. I also plan on starting from where Jonette hits Wittenberg. I'm going to videotape the entire road from the beginning before anything starts. So if there is an issue, we can go back to the tape and see, okay, there was a problem here. They're still here, you know, so there won't be any of that. But like I say, a liability policy and then workers' comp and we go to the town, so.
And I just want to remind the board also that now with Timber Harvest, we have our forester on it. So she had done the initials like this. We've worked with Chris before and have never had an issue. And like he said, there's a bond, and because it's a private road, it's a little bit different. It becomes kind of silly.
And so that's where I think it's appropriate that, you know, the liability policy be posted. So if there are any issues, you know, the logger can't just walk away.
And Chris, you have been on the vast, you've been willing to speak to the neighbors. So I know that he was open communication also.
Yeah, and listen, this comes up all the time.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, I understand. You put a heavy truck on a gravel road, then sure, can run the potential of, of, you know, damage. It's the same as when the town asks for a performance bond or a road bond, so, yeah.
Again, board members have any questions?
This is what I was just talking about.
They're not here. They spoke to me directly and, yeah.
All right, then, necessary motion to close the public hearing. Favor. Okay. So we're going to make a move to approve the application pending a draft resolution. Favor for that.
We're second.
Favor? Okay.
I'll have that out as soon as I can.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, our next case is senior development. L O C, landing board case 25-1237. Special use permit 25-390. And a water court permit 25-0260. And this is a sketch plan review, number three, discussion amongst consultants and applicants and board of subdivision site review and water court permit application. To reconfigure lot lines, efficient from three to two parkable. Remodification from existing site by expanding the road in the R5 zoning dislocated at Eastwood Drive and Woodstock.
So I just want to start by introducing all of our people here, just to kind of ease our way into this. So as many of our planning board members, directly next to Gregan is Dr. Eric Kivya. He's our project senior scientist. Next to him is Mr. Tom Lyons. He is our planning board attorney. Next to him is Kim Garrison. She is, she's John Breitman, and she's common media. And then next to Kim is Stephen LaFayette, traffic consultant. All right. Have that.
Okay. So this is our third sketch plan review. And basically, let me be answering questions from our consultants that you have reviewed and we'll see between everybody what we've worked out, so do you want to start?
Yeah, sure. Good evening again, out by Cudahyater, returning for a project with Walt Wood, number six, civil engineer. Tom Johnson, our traffic engineer, David Dougal, our environmental consultant. So just to quickly start off by reviewing what we submitted last time. Basically, the main focus of that submission was just an outline of all the various mitigation measures that we were proposing as part of our application to approve the rip. And these are shown on the sheets which were submitted as existed, I think that's to our last submission. Walt can go through the detail, and so can David. But just to quickly run through everything that we have proposed to date and then hopefully get feedback from the board. I mean, other suggestions that you would like us to incorporate. So first and foremost, during the construction phase, the main measure for temporary erosion and sediment control is so fencing, which is in the split that has been provided by our engineer. And then as far as permanent mitigations for expanding the roadway, one of the things that we're proposing, have proposed from the start is the planting of native shrubs in the vicinity of the encroachment areas for foraging and potential nesting habitats for birds. So this will be different types of blueberry, arrow wood, and we're going to try to source these from a local greenhouse or nursery. We are also proposing to be crossing signs, whichever collected on the different plan sheets throughout. Post speed limits, and these were some things that were suggested by your environmental consultant, which we have since incorporated. We are going to use a pollinator seed mix in areas that are disturbed and need to be seeded. And we're also, there's a note on the plan, it can be fleshed out more. It is a construction protocol to clean equipment to reduce some basic species spread during construction, within the construction limits. And then, one thing that we are doing that was suggested already by the consultant is we are using grass filter strips along the road to remove entrapped sediment. And that was specifically suggested, and some of those reported as a guess for the Anderson mitigation. And Walt concerned to speak to that more, but that was already incorporated in our stormwater measures for the edge of the road. And then another thing that we have since added, and I believe they're showing up in the degree, there is natural bottom or arched culverts. These are the locations of existing culverts under the road, right, have a crumbling family to be replaced. But rather than doing a standard culvert, we're proposing a natural bottom one, just to help facilitate that. And also, just in general, our stormwater pollution prevention plan includes grass filter strips whales, which provides multi-stage treatment runoff from the road before being directed to the culverts. Dispersed for infiltration. So that's just a high level overview. I know that was a lot of information, so please, on specific points, no, ask questions. We have our full team here.
Okay, well, let's start with the traffic consultant. One of my concerns, everybody, actually, we are cool. Intersect. So I know we, our consultants with. That's an information for us on that.
Sure. This chairman of the board, applicants. For the project, and your four basic issues that we looked at in terms of the traffic impacts on the surrounding street system. I found essentially that the existing traffic points, their base, the background traffic growth, in other words, what may be happening on the road lanes, other than the development that they're proposing. Then their own trip distribution and generation for the project itself. And then a level of service analysis at various intersections that they study. In all four of these instances, I found that their, their, the work was appropriate. And that the results were indicative of a relatively low volume of development with very little impact on the surrounding street system. The fifth issue, though, has to do with the access and the extension of Eastwood Drive. Site. In terms of a. It being in. As far as the application is concerned, in compliance with the fire, fire safety code. And there's a, New York State in 2020 has a fire code. In it are requirements for what they call a fire apparatus access road, or F A K R. Yet they are, has to be, or has to follow the state's fire code requirements in terms of its width length, whether it can carry the load of a heavy fire vehicle, so on. As I look through this, and based on some information that I've gathered over the years, in terms of the fire code, there were, there are unanswered questions about the single fire access road with the extension of Eastwood Drive, being wide to 20 feet. And its length possibly requiring either a second access road or a single access road that meets with standards, but is supplemented by sprinkler systems in each of the dwellings. At this point, I don't believe there's been answers from the applicant describing exactly how they want to meet the requirements of the state fire code. The road width 20 feet with, for a long dead end that exceeds the state requirement for a minimum of seven, actually, fifth foot dead end. About 2,800 linear feet. Far, far beyond the length that a single fire access road is acceptable, that they either have to build a second access road or create a wider road, wider than 20 feet, along with the sprinkler system into the door. They're at a point, though, where the code specifies sort of number of units where other issues, other items like the sprinkler system it's in, in terms of meeting the requirements, but they haven't actually answered that yet. Is that part of the plan? With the fire, the F A K R, and other answers regarding emergency access, not only for fire trucks, but police and EMS. So that's where I have with, with that review. And hoping to see some responses specifically to the width and length of the road lane. What other items they did have going to satisfy the state's requirement.
Thank you. You want to have a response to this?
Yeah, sure. No, I'm happy to have in this discussion. So this is definitely something that we've been looking into. But I feel like we're in a bit of a classic chicken or the egg situation, because we submitted to the board and showed you last meeting an option for a secondary access road, right? And so I guess we kind of need some direction from the board on what to do, because obviously sprinkling the homes has an added cost to it. And we've looked into it, and I think it's something that we're seriously considering. But if you're not willing to grant a waiver of that road length requirement in subdivision code, which would compel us to build that second road, then we want to need to sprinkle the buildings. So we kind of, before we can kind of, you know, advance one way or the other, I think we need some feedback from the board on, you know, which direction you would like to see this project go. If you need time to think about it, of course, we understand that, that too. But just, you know, what, I don't want to end up in a situation where we have to, you know, add that added project cost to sprinkle the homes and go the second road.
Okay, something we'll, we'll think about. The other major issue, of course, is that this road is in the critical environmental area. And as we have an environmentalist who has looked into the situation, and I know in the beginning you described some of the measures taken, putting the culverts, you know, with ground inside and so on. But if our consultant would like to tell the board what you think is best to do for the critical environmental area protection.
Well, I just want to raise some questions to just, firstly, will these features be written up such that I could see the details and be able to just, um, to them?
Yeah, we've, well, is that, and please. Most of this stuff was on the plans, but we did spend the, went on the water, had most of that listed out, too.
Latest submission should have.
From the 23rd, right?
I think so.
Yeah, so July 23rd. Yeah, and we submitted you sheets as it was presented out. I believe you provided them electronically as a paper.
Something that was sent out in the last.
Yes, you actually, you do have that, but you haven't worked on that report yet. So that basically answered your, that answered your first review. And then we met, so then you guys produced that, and you just haven't had a chance to look at it. Because we had a little town issue with the tourism and everything else, so he hasn't.
Okay.
Surround me about his son, but.
So I have had July 7th report that date. But this information, I believe, is not July 7th.
No.
No, July 20, July 23rd is the date.
I'll make sure I look that. No, I just. These issues aren't necessarily anything new, like I mentioned before, most of them. I want to raise a few issues that I think need to be addressed in terms of the biology of the area. First of all, the Antivian crossing report that was issued in the late straight. Did not address Antivian crossings on Zina Hybrids or what show the experience increased traffic. So the, the Antivian crossing issue is not limited to Eastwood's road. It also has to be addressed on the public road that will be contamining some of that traffic probably, if you don't think. Another issue that I think needs additional attention is there are two very high quality, in my opinion, wetlands on the south side of the proposed entrance road. One is at the western end near Zina Hydrids Road. And particularly just the shortest itself of Eastwood's ride. There's a white pine, red maple, stagnant, moss wetlands. I think has great, like, potential for rare plants and animals. These wetlands are next to or down the slope from the Eastwood's Drive proposed access road. So they will be affected by siltation. Proposed access roads, so they will be affected by siltation. Silpentas and filter strips will help perhaps markedly, but they will not trap. All of the fine silo particles. And this is well documented more than I'm sure on siltation damage. There will also be impacts on the wetlands from. Use of the access road after the subdivision is built or after part of it is built. You know, well understood kinds of impacts. You have something about probably need to repeat right now.
Is that is that area? I didn't hear you said the area was. Is that on the existing road or on the?
Okay, there are two very high quality wetlands. Not sure I. I'll try to like this. So one one wetland is in this area in here. It starts right at the end of Eastwood's ride. And extends to the south almost as far as the. Corey Lake complex. And the other one is not on this map. It's it's it joins, okay. It joins the. Fortunately, the access road that could be built and new between the airstrip. And the construction, the housing construction area. Yeah, yes, yes, this is it here. And it's, as you can see, it's. Very close to the proposed road here. This is a remarkable, large, high quality. I have always seen the habitat. I haven't had an opportunity to involve a lot of the work here. I anticipate that there are. Antivians concerned using that wetland and possibly other. And emerging issue here that I think has not been addressed is that the Bald Eagle Nest shifted. Site from old South Hill Road to a point. On the east side of Zina Hywits Road, just about at the north end of the. Silted pond or lake that's between South Hill Road and Zina Hywits Road. So that nest was active. Yes, that's there, so we do have some information.
Yes.
I don't think it's much new, but I said.
It was in the.
Okay, very good. I'm glad that you know about this. So that analysis, of course, very much closer to Eastwood's Drive and the previous. Was, and I think it's right next to the proposed alternate access road. Would be close to the. I'm not sure that alternate route is still. On the table. And, you know, my my other thought right now, and I want to have a chance to review these documents more carefully. Is that. The biological work has been done at the site by. Focuses on. Federally and state lists an endangered threat species, or species that are proposed for federal listing. And it does not give any detail address other biological resources at the site. The Eastwood's Drive and its facility. Obviously, also vicinity of the proposed alternate access road. So I'll be able to comment on these issues more in detail.
Excellent.
I will. I will send that to you again tonight also, so you have it fresh in your email.
So in your opening statement, you did address some of those issues.
Right.
Access along the road. I might also mention to everybody, though, that the D E C has taken their official termination. Go wait for their determination as to what. So. What did you want us to respond about the access road part?
I guess just general input about. How the board feels about that secondary access road and whether you're willing to entertain a waiver so that we don't have to construct it.
Say that one sentence.
If you would be willing to entertain a waiver, so there's a provision in your subdivision code. That limits the length of subdivision roads. But this board can grant a waiver if it's basically the best interest of the community or the environment. We qualify for that. So we made it. We made a formal request.
For board members, it actually could, or attorney question is. The state requirements for protection, fire protection. So I'm not sure that we even can't wait for that.
Well, you're being you're being asked to waive the second row of that's a two.
Right, which would necessarily lead to needing to comply with the fire code, which would be. Sprinkling the homes.
Which will require.
Yeah, yeah, but if you don't grant the waiver, then just build a secondary access road.
I'm not prepared to answer the question off the top of your head, but we can take a look at it and just. You have to look at what your waiver criteria is and then apply it to the question to see whether or not that's. You know, the judgment of the board is, but that can get you. I can get you. A little memo to. Certainly for board members to explain what waiver criteria are so that you ultimately. I mean, the only thing I'd say is that, you know, it would be. You know, it it's early in the process to be making waiver decisions. I mean, write a sketch plan conference, and I understand what you're, I understand the planning considerations that are entering into this equation. From your client's standpoint. But I would just, you know, point that out and also note that. There's a chance that the environmental review could end up impacting elements of design project and subject. Change also, or circumstances are after the environmental reviews.
Yeah, no, of course, we we definitely understand that. It's just this particular question has a. You know, a big cascading effect because we do have to. Build a secondary access road, and basically every report that we submitted, except for the traffic report, because we're not changing the number of homes. Would have to be updated to account for that additional impact. We can kind of leave the sprinkling open ended. I think it's an easy adjustment on the plans if if, you know. That you are granting the waiver. We'll just keep that in our back pocket.
Okay. All right, so we're waiting on that, of course, the way the D E C's. Determination of what they want to be done.
We had, so we had a response to the E C on the wet.
Right.
So there are two of the parcels have have a positive J D, which means those wetlands would then be D E C's intersection. Parcel this metal was determined not to be. It's not a problem, so. But that small middle parcel. And any of the white ones on basically either side would be our state weapons. So that is a determination from.
So, you know, when you do your application to D E C, you're gonna you're gonna get a permit from them. What you're doing.
Right, Tom. When they would be like applying and getting that permit. In the process, so typically you need secret.
All right, just another note regarding the road. Eastwood Lane, our site visit, we had a very good site visit. The whole staff here. We did conclude that for the benefit of those folks living on Eastwood Lane right now. That we would make a condition that that road be kept in very good condition during the construction process. Those folks that live on that road. Won't have to drive up and down to us. So what members have questions to the applicants here regarding the environment or the traffic?
Yeah, I just, if we could ask if the applicants. Attention is to contact the state division of building codes in terms of the fire apparatus access road. What exactly will be needed to meet the requirements or the town building department or the town's. Fire department to to get some feedback from those agencies. In terms of confirming what I believe is is a requirement. And or options that they may have in order to satisfy what the state fire code has been required. At this point, I don't know what their tensions are, but in in terms of that, but I would suggest that that's. That would be a very good place to start in terms of responding to these concerns.
Okay, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll wait on that. The. The other issue that. About the road. Again, we'll just have to wait until our control set to see what the what the. Both the D E C say and what the highway department says, but I think at this point, we would want to include our. Fire department and highway department. To get some feedback from them. Just curious, is there an option about putting a turnaround somewhere on the road? Would that satisfy? Pull over along the way with that?
We could certainly do that, and we could put one in. End of the town of Woodstock, so you would have a turnaround. I'm not sure where the fire trucks would turn around now when they go down there. Maybe they use the runway to turn around. So I don't think there's a physical turnaround there now, but we could certainly put an actual. Turnaround hammerhead, you know, turnaround that's approvable by fire code appendix D. And if the town or department is is happy with it, it could probably accommodate one.
But that's the that would be an issue to one way to solve. And the other issue, of course, is the fact. That fire and and. So for a day, you're never coming out of Woodstock. We have to come to some kind of an understanding if Woodstock is going to be supplying. First emergency services, fire services. To another town, basically. We would need to get some sign of clarification from fire department.
Yep, so we've reached out to county nine one one on that issue, just to try to get more information and frankly educate ourselves on how the calls are routed. And I had a preliminary email which we can submit to the board, and what county nine one one said is that. Regardless of how they're accessed, wherever the structures are located, where the call is coming from, it gets routed to that department, and that's considered like the home department. Sometimes there can be agreements between the departments as to who responds to a specific location. But that's at the discretion of our department, which in this case would be. Will be fired for town holster, but we are speaking with them next week. He was out on vacation this week, so we can get a chance to speak with him before this meeting. So hopefully we have some more information that we can provide for on that issue.
Board members, questions?
You're saying that. Town holster. Town holster.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah, yeah. This was his response, if you want to see it. And I will submit this, of course, so it's it's in the records, but I just had it last week.
So maybe you got to determine travel time from wherever.
Right, I think there's some. Yeah, interdepartment coordination that sounds like it'll will have to occur, but yeah, we're gonna be speaking with the nine one one coordinator at the county. To try to figure out exactly what it is, so we can fully answer that question.
And then I would view it as still third.
What's that? It's all papers, like the text of the emergency services book.
Well, I don't know.
Well, there's Ruby's response. Said it has to be Woodstock because they're closer or faster or something.
So there had been.
Yeah.
Sometimes with bigger, sometimes, so what they are saying is that. As is right now, it looks like Ruby would be responsible. But there has happened that larger developments come in and Ruby will say, our response, and I, this is totally like. I'm setting it up. I'm just giving you examples. Ruby will say, our our response time is to this address seven point three minutes. But Woodstock's response time is two point three minutes. So then they have to work out with Woodstock. It has, it's an agreement that has to come to play, which is why this conversation is important. And they gotta figure it out. What happened to the discussion here in this first manual of you guys firing your private ambulance service? There's some, it's something, there's a lot of information out here about private ambulance service. And discussion about a private ambulance service, which would take the costs off of Woodstock. Because Woodstock is always going to be closer. It's the only access into your development.
Right, so the town holster in March of this year entered into a contract with Adress for for their. Ambulance service. And what the Ulster town attorney has told me is that any calls originating from Ulster. Because of the contract with the ambulance provider, that ambulance provider gets priority. So my understanding is the call will go to them first, and if they're available, they'll respond for any call originating within the town.
Which is not a private ambulance on the applicant's part. That is in agreement with the town holster, just so we understand. So it's not.
Yep.
This is possibility. So who would be paying for that?
Ulster.
Ulster would be paying for that.
Yes. Yeah, and just to put a little more context on, and I don't mean this to come across as downplaying the issue. But we had provided the county study, and they came up with a rate of response for the county based on historical calls of the number of population. And for in development, thirty homes, it equates to about nine point eight calls per year.
Any other questions from the board?
All right, so we've got some discovering yet to do.
Everybody has work to do. Do my consultants have any questions for the applicants right now? This is amazing that we are all here and I want to thank everyone.
Before we break, I just want just one thing. Is retiring come or is there time? So I know there were five questions and there was, I believe, there's only one that's open on the length of the road and the access. Which is not really his expertise anyway. It's more of a legal. Oh, our items, one through four, as far as you guys are concerned. Clothes at this point, or or can can he go on his vacation or or?
Roads at this point, or, or can, can he go on his vacation or, or? What is there, is that, how, is that, how do we?
Well, they really did have both consultants agreed with the intersection of Eastwood Drive and Zina Highway Road is going to be good enough for that kind of traffic.
I believe so, but I think they should say that in front of you guys and you guys should agree. I believe, from reading the two reports, I believe that is true. But I want to make sure everyone's stable.
Yeah.
I'm satisfied with it.
Fine, but in terms of the, the traffic, their, their trip generation is appropriate for that size of bone. That type of development. Realizing also too that as you get farther away from the development, this traffic begins to move lots of different roadways, make different turns, the impact gets smaller and smaller as you. Get farther away from the development. The closest intersection where it does in Highland Road is relatively low volume, you're adding more low volume development. There should be no issues as far as impacts on that intersection. So in, in essence, yes, we're agreeing to that, those impacts.
So the, the way you have designed the entrance is acceptable on both sides as far as traffic.
Yeah, if, if Eastwood is the only access, it would. If it's found out later than, if you require access requirements, second access is necessary. It, it's actually a good split or could split the, the traffic if both are active driveways. If one is only, is for emergency only. That's another thing that they have to figure out, whether they provide that, that route into the site. It's an option, maybe Eastwood's drive access, emergency vehicles have alternatives. That's the whole idea of secondary access for emergency purposes is that fire apparatus can reach the site. In this case, it's, it's much more important, there's no length, the sheer length of the road base. From Zina Highlands to the site going across wetland areas and so on. The, the proposed secondary access, which is on. Sheets of any related submission, it turns out to be somewhere in the neighborhood of nine thousand eight hundred linear feet. From Zina Highlands, which is cessably long in terms of e- even just an emergency access, but still if they were to build it, it would. My estimation, and this needs to be confirmed by the state, the town's building department as well. That it would still be a long access, but it would, it would satisfy the requirements for at least a secondary access. And then there are other, other details to that as well, in terms of with the road, if you had two roadways, then they only have to be twenty feet wide. If you have a single access with sprinkler, that access road has to be twenty six foot wide. So, you know, that's, that's going to affect the, the Eastwood Drive improvement. That's at this point now, it's a single driveway with sprinkler, sprinklers in the building, it has to be wide open between.
Let's. Yeah, that's something we can look at. I believe the twenty six foot requirement is if it has hydrants along it, and this wouldn't be providing, this doesn't have municipal water.
That's the case, that's, that's, I didn't see that in my review of the state's code, but if that's in the code, they say that. As, you know, that's supposed to be, you can do that instead. Okay, follow the state, stay close.
All right, yeah, I can share that if you want.
Do you have enough room to get questions?
Um, if we had to, yes. But I believe with the interpretation of the code, and I would certainly double check, that's if there's hydrants located along the road, it has to be wider, that's correct. But in this case, there aren't hydrants because it's all individual wells currently on Eastwood and also being proposed in Holster. So that extra width would be a requirement.
Could I get some detail on that interpretation? Yeah, I'm probably more of an expert than I am, but that is not my understanding of the code. So.
I'll look at appendix D and I can check that over.
Yeah, I have appendix D, okay, can identify for me what the basis of the interpretation is, I'd be interested in seeing that. Sure, thank you.
One question about the entrance to Eastwood Drive, is that on your, when your road is modified? Are you going to be doing anything to modify Eastwood Drive in the opening so that when people are coming down that hill? Especially during the cold weather, they can, or during icy weather, they can actually see that's a blind spot coming down that hill. It's a hill there and. It's not as bad when you're coming up, but anyone coming, and that's the reason why I asked. About the sovereignty, has anyone looked at the traffic study or the roads' conditions when we were doing the site visit? Coming from Glasgow Turnpike, that particular curve coming down from Lauren Port actually into eastward. It's quite the curve and quite a blind spot. And during the snowy weather can be very dangerous, it can be a very dangerous intersection. So I think that needs to be looked at as well. And again, as I said, I requested that when we were doing the site visit. I couldn't understand why anything wasn't being run past Eastwood Drive, but only between Eastwood Drive and Soft Hill Road. So, but I'd like to have that looked at as well for safety issues for the community.
It's fine, I think, I think you have, you can take a look at that intersection, that side distance.
Yeah, it's quiet, it's quiet, there's a house and trees and, I mean, it's a, it's a very walked upon road, but during the winter, it's, it's a different. Topography coming from the other direction.
Good. Any other questions from board or from? Open? All right. I guess we have to wait and get more information before we just go to another meeting.
I want to thank everybody again, this is. For my organizational skills.
Thank you.
All right, so we know the things we're gonna get. Get those answers, whether we can.
Everybody knows what they have to work on.
Sort of turnaround on the road or widen the road or. We'll look at the waiver issues legally, how that looks. And I believe we saw the, the wetland issue as far as mitigation and. Origin along roadside.
And then maybe one of the things we can talk about here is finding out whether the board members are sufficiently. Satisfied about the. Amount of information that's been provided to the board so that. The application can graduate from the sketch plan conference stage and get into the cycling review phase of. Review, so that's something else to think about for, for the next actions of the board.
All right. I thank everybody. And I thank the audience for listening and not interrupting. We do have a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members, so when I got. I think we can let our consultants go too unless you guys have any.
We're good here, thank you for bringing.
We're gonna confirm a date, right? Someone have a word?
Uh, yes, we are, yeah. And we can do that over there.
Thank you so much.
Everybody, nice to see you again. This is a good recorder, I can ask a lot of new words.
Thank you so much, so, so, so much for everything you do.
And. Just to bring the planning board members to agree with you and Melissa.
Yes.
Bring them up to date on, so on what's happening with lead agency.
Perfect.
There's the Department of Environmental Conservation reached out to us, asking for some more detail. On the permits that are required from Woodstock and whether they're discretionary, whether discretionary authorities are required for those. Ministerial, so our office is in the midst of preparing a memo on behalf of the board to respond to that. It'll be ready tomorrow, I'll circulate back to you tomorrow. They actually, your, your, the wetlands permits discretionary, cycling's discretionary, and two eighty eight compliance is discretionary.
That's two eighty eight?
That's the New York State town law.
For access to the road.
Yes.
If it's been approved by the town or if it hasn't, it has to be substantially, they're suitably approved. So this is in regards to lead agency and then do we see solving the dispute of whether or not the town holster planning will be or will be. But yes, but we're in the process.
Yep. So anyway, that's where we are.
Thank you.
We should have an answer sometime.
Mr. Lyman's again, he can really remember.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
So nice to meet you.
Ah, no problem, no problem.
Oh, they're so tame, probably why I ran up. Dear, they're so tame.
All right, board members, a couple things left here. We've got the food, the draft resolution for the timber harvest. S U P twenty five deck zero seven, zero four.
Close enough.
All right, so we have a, okay on that one, all favor to the resolution on the timber harvest. And then the house and restaurant.
Oh, no, not yet, you missed, so there's another resolution, the Lawler and Vera.
The what?
Lawler and Vera, that was the short term, that's all.
Oh, the short term, oh, all right.
So there's two resolutions that Peter just made a motion for, S U P twenty five deck zero seven zero four also. And he made a motion, Genie seconded, how many eyes do I hear?
I, I.
Okay, now Allison's.
Allison, yeah.
Let's talk.
So, you know, I said, well, I didn't think the idea of the picky tables was good, and I liked her idea of putting a little table by the door, but the building inspector said, no. That, that he picked those tables because the chairs can't move. And we moved around it then.
And they didn't like that it was up against the.
True, yeah.
So they were looking at a sidewalk being against the building as opposed to, so right, I thought I had a beautiful idea too, let's fix this. And it kind of got all abolished.
So the building inspector said that there's enough legal sidewalk left to, to meet the code. So, I mean, he's the zoning enforcement officer, he says it needs zoning code and it does. I just thought, any, putting anything in the middle of the sidewalk, I wasn't, but.
I, I was just down there.
Like you work, you're there every day.
And, you know, the people sitting on that bench around the tree, you can't walk into the tree. So the tree kind of like creates a little patio. And I don't think it would be that sensitive, I think. You know, five hundred feet in the other direction, the sidewalk's like this narrow and people are battling already that type of sidewalk. I'm not saying that it looks like a sidewalk narrower or anything worse, I don't mean it that way, I just mean that I still think there's a lot of room there. I don't know, personally, I see a couple people sitting up there having lunch with their dog to be a charm.
Well. Let's have a vote, I agree to do it the way they propose.
One second. Well, Genie seconded, so now we need eyes.
All right.
I.
All right.
I will have a resolution at the next meeting and you guys will take it, so we'll. All right, end meeting.
Well, it's your turn.
It's Saturday and it's really Friday, I guess.
Back to work.